Okay, it's six oh two. We're gonna get going with the, um, uh, call the order of the November eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting of the Board of Education. Please stand up for the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think this is our motion which we approve. Come on. Thank you, Howard. There's a favor? Um, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting?
Both the Board of Education and the Board of Representatives is pretending to approve the minutes from the actual fourteen, twenty twenty five regular meeting of the Board of Education.
Second question, uh, those in favor? That is fine. Thank you very much. It is time for the privilege of the floor. Um, so we are, um, experimenting with a new format for privilege of the floor. Uh, we discussed it at our last meeting. The first privilege of the floor, you'll see on, uh, tonight's agenda, there are two. Um, so the first one will deal with anything that's on tonight's agenda. Um, and then the second privilege of the floor will address any other topics that the, um, people in here, uh, would like to discuss. Um, if I am reading this correctly, then it's not on tonight's agenda, so we will hold off our privilege of the floor, um, personally till the end. Till the second privilege. All right, item one F, ex officio student board member reports, I guess.
Is there? Oh, okay. Um, in terms of student success, there's been a lot of great things going on at the high school. Um, I'd just like to note that our varsity girls swim team got second place at the sectionals meet and made beat Shen for the first time since like twenty seventeen. Um, we are sending seven swimmers to the state level meet, um, which is the most swimmers we've had at that level since twenty twenty two.
She's one of them. She is one of them.
Um, we also had our powder puff football games between the junior and senior class. And it was definitely success for the juniors because not only did we win the game, but we fundraised a lot of money, um, for our class, as well as we had a donation bin going for non-perishable food items that people could bring in at the door, um, which was very successful. And we were allowed to use the new gatehouse, um, to sell the tickets and collect the food. And that was a really awesome opportunity and it was great in there.
Um, I would like to update you guys on the lunch lines. I know it was a big issue last time, but they did end up switching the sides of hot lunch and like cold pizza. And I think it definitely frees up space in the lunchroom or at least creates like the illusion that there's a much shorter line. So there's definitely been less, um, issues revolving that. And also the fact that, um, students would love to have a nickname for Niski as in terms of like a mascot, rather than just Niski or Niskuna. So Student Congress is working on setting up a student-led nickname committee that we are hoping to, they can finish up any legal things and work on that before the end of this school year. So it can be implemented as early as next school year. So, yeah.
Yeah, just, um, echoing what Arian said, we're right now in the stage of developing how we're going to, how we're going to select the committee, who's gonna be on it, uh, where, like, where the students are coming from, whether or not, how many teachers, administrators, et cetera. Uh, and then once the committee is created and starts meeting, we're hoping to have them report on like any initial plans to the board and their timeline for how long they would like, how long they believe the process is gonna take, what sort of things they're gonna be looking at as sort of preliminary report to the board. And then, uh, after that, we'll have, uh, we'll have them report again once they are nearing a consensus or have reached a consensus. So that's the general timeline for that. Uh, as Arian said, we hope that we can get it done by the end of this, like, academic year so that we can roll out the changes at least to, uh, like sign, uh, at least to logos and other things to be easy to change by the beginning of next year. And, uh, our goal is for it to be as student-led as possible. So, uh, that is, I think that's the main thing that Student Congress is working on. Uh, additionally, uh, it, it's appeared later on in the consent agenda, but the NSKUNA Science Bowl team, which I'm a part of, uh, went to the annual MIT Invitational and placed within the top sixteen out of forty-eight of the best teams around the country. It was a very, it was a very challenging competition, but it was a great experience. We definitely got a lot of preparation for our future competitions. We did beat Shen by like two rounds in terms of the placing. They were, they were the top thirty-two.
There's a theme going here.
Uh, yeah, just wanted to call attention to that.
Okay. It's great. Congratulations.
I just wanted to say that we had our student forum and that went quite well. Um, a few students came. I know some of our, our board members were there. Um, and yeah, I think it went really well. People are generally happy with everything that's going on. Um, except, yeah, people are really pushing for, um, a nickname, like a proper nickname. And they don't really like, though, like the Niski. They, they really want like an official mascot and name that they can identify with.
I think, um, changing the name or not changing, but coming up with the name as a student-driven idea. I love that idea. Um, you know, like we had Silver Warriors right? And that was our moniker. But, um, the N is our logo. So, you know, it's a, we kept the logo, but we dropped the moniker. So really curious to see what the, uh, what the students come up with. Just don't change the color. We have a lot to catch. Only two cents.
Let's look. Thank you so much. And one G, the superintendent's report?
Thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll start by thanking the students. We did have a very, um, I'll say energized student forum. It's a unique group that not every school has, but I'm delighted that our students make time to spend with building level and district level and governance team members, uh, to talk about their, their wants, their needs and their priorities. And when they floated the idea of, of a student-led and student-driven mascot committee, I, I said, well, I can't speak for the board. I certainly, as a superintendent, support that work. And I think as long as the students preview their plan with the board, um, have early buy-in from the board and provide periodic updates, that it will be a process that is most welcome. So I, I commend you on the initiative for, um, taking a leadership role in that area. Uh, I, I want to, I'll kind of go backwards, uh, because Addison got us started by talking about some of the, uh, terrific successes that we've realized in our swim program. And, uh, we are sending seven students to the, to the state swim meet. They are competing. And you'll tell me if I got this right, but we have swimmers competing, um, teams on the two hundred medley, the two hundred freestyle and the four hundred freestyle. And then we have individual competitors for the two hundred medley, two hun- or one hundred backstroke, the fifty and one hundred freestyle and the one hundred breaststroke. So Niskuna is exceptionally well represented at the state swim meet. And congratulations to you and your, your many teammates. We also saw some tremendous success with, um, two others of our team securing sectional titles, our girls soccer program and our boys' football program. Um, each secured their respective titles in section two. We sent, um, uh, members of our tennis team to the state competition for doubles competition. And we have, um, we are also sending a group from our boys' cross-country program to advance to the Federation meet competition. So, uh, across the board, we've had great success in our athletic programs this fall. And we're super excited to see those teams finish out their seasons and our winter sports seasons commence. So congratulations and good luck. I also would like to, um, thank the community at large for their participation and support of our rededication ceremony that we held at Iroquois Middle School last week on November twelfth. We had, um, many board members, past and present, who attended that meeting. We also had two former superintendents, uh, Senator Jim Tedesco, Assemblyman Phil Steck, um, along with many faculty and staff members, dozens and dozens of our Iroquois middle school students who served as very skilled tour guides and many from our, our community attended. Uh, I'd like to extend special thanks to both King and King and Turner, along with our Iroquois PTO, who provided the refreshments for this eve- for, for that evening. And I think what we demonstrated to our community is a really powerful return on investment. Um, we have asked for a tremendous amount of support and trust from our community. And we have delivered on the renovations at the high school athletic complex. We have delivered on the renovations at the Iroquois Middle School. And we're very, very excited to see those renovations and, uh, construction continue at Van Antwerp and across our five elementary schools beginning this summer. So, um, I, I know that when we, uh, conducted the rededication, we had a mock-up of the bronze plaque. Uh, shipping delays prevented it from getting here on time, but it is here on time for tonight's board meeting. And so I, uh, Cynthia and I lugged it down to the boardroom and we will make sure that it is properly installed at the Iroquois Middle School, um, to formally, uh, commemorate the rededication of the building. And, and most appropriately, we've dedicated it to our community. Um, it is their property. We operate it in service to them and we are the stewards of that facility for generations to come. So, um, I'll just pause there and see while I'm on the subject, if any board members wanted to, uh, comment on that.
Just the award they gave us, right?
Absolutely. Senator Tedesco presented, I think, the Empire Award, which is the highest award that the New York State Senate can bestow upon a school district, or in this case, a school building. Um, and Jessica was able to receive that award on behalf of the entire board. Um, and I think it speaks to the confidence that our legislature has in our schools. And I think it was even remarked, um, by Assemblyman Steck that this is, uh, one of the premier districts in all of New York State and that his colleagues throughout the assembly are very envious of our performance and, um, all of our accolades. So, uh, so I thank you for that as well as your, your remarks.
It was great and it was really well attended. Um, it, it, you guys can chime in, but it was great. Um, very well planned out, lots of people, lots of representation. Um, I love the, yeah, the kids, uh, cut the ribbon. Um, it was great. Thank you for doing it.
Absolutely.
It was steady, people streaming in all night long, which was really nice.
Yeah, it's interesting because a lot of the Iroquois families have already seen it as, as part of our back-to-school night. We saw a lot of parents with younger children who are looking forward. We saw some parents from our high school whose children were like, how come this could not have happened when we were there? And we understand that. Um, and then we saw a lot of people from the community who do not have children in school, but who have a vested interest in the, the success of our district and have contributed greatly to the outcomes that we've been able to achieve.
I thought it was special that Briggs and, um, John came.
Yeah.
The two former superintendents came to see it. I thought that said a lot for their commitment in our district.
I think it was a nice gesture on the part of the district to welcome the community and to see it. I know it's a big undertaking and it's, you know, planning and, and volunteer hours for folks to do. But it was, I think it meant a lot to a lot of folks. Um, I know for me, it meant a lot just to be able to expose folks to, like you said, their investment. Um, so I appreciate that.
So onward and upward and, um, we, we look forward to a, a similar grand reopening of Van Antwerp in the fall of twenty-seven. So we've got a lot of construction underway between now and then. Uh, the third item I have is just, um, a, a very preliminary report out. We have closed out this year's participation in our school climate survey. That was last administered in the fall of twenty-two. Um, and we now have it set up where it will run on every other year's cycle. So this is a broad survey of faculty, staff, um, parents and students. And it assesses their perceptions on a variety of questions related to school climate and culture. I, at this point, have no data to report out other than our participation levels, which were very high. And so I extend a thank you to the community. We had over two hundred and sixty staff members respond, over six hundred parents and over twenty-one hundred of our students in grades six through twelve. So I think we've got a remarkable body of evidence that will speak to our successes as well as our opportunities. And our communications team is working on preparing a high-level summary for the board that we intend to present to you in December or January, the very latest. But we're targeting the December date for that. So just a huge thank you to everybody who participated. We moved to a new platform that was much more user-friendly this year and much more mobile phone-friendly. So hopefully that contributed to some of the higher participation rates as well. And last, I'm happy to announce that we entered into contract earlier this month with Capital Region BOSIS, um, who manages our communication services, including our website, for a full redesign and a new website. And so that work will be commencing, um, this month with the, uh, deployment of a very short ten-question survey, uh, to our broad school community that asks how they use our school website, what they like about it and what they absolutely hate about it. And, um, that is the very first collection of data that will help us better understand how our consumers use and want to use our website. Um, and this is about a twenty to thirty-week process that begins with the survey and will extend through the spring semester of this year. And the communications team is targeting a, um, an unveiling of the new site either in early August or mid-September. And that's really gonna depend upon the degree to which we're able to hold to all of the interim deadlines. But this represents a major investment, um, on behalf of the district. And it's, uh, we, we refreshed this website three years ago, but it is one of the earliest generation websites of this style that BOSIS created. So I think we all agree that we're longed to for an upgrade. And, um, BOSIS has accelerated the process. In years past, this process would take closer to fifty weeks. And they've got it down to a twenty to thirty-week, um, time period from, from survey to completion. So we're really, really excited about that. Um, so we'll be providing periodic updates to the board on our design efforts, but I did want to let you know that that survey will be going out. And again, all eyes are on a deployment, uh, summer or early fall of twenty-six. And that concludes my report.
Great. President's report. Um, this past month was really busy. Um, I will save committees and liaisons for later, but I think that what I would like to just thank the district for and the community for is the support to attend the NSBA conference, um, that was held mid-October, um, in Italy twenties. Um, it was invaluable. Um, there is always a great deal to learn, um, a good deal to hear about from other districts, how they're handling things. Um, and, uh, the, I keep coming away from these trainings with a great deal of ideas and suggestions for us and ways for us to, um, uh, be more efficient, be more, um, open with the community and for me personally to just do any part of this job, just to look. So thank you to the district for continuing to make that available to us and to the community for this work. And then the, I was going to talk about the, the rededication as well, but I'll get that better than I could. So, um, we'll move on to board committee chair reports. Policy, Matt and Academic Programs Committee.
So, uh, policy, we mostly do student services, the seven thousand section. Uh, we also talked a little bit about the privilege of the floor change, but I guess we're just doing it.
I think the thought process was that we approved the agenda each time, so we're able to make changes to the agenda. We're still gonna change the policy or adopt the policy, um, changes, but that we could get started with it ahead of, it doesn't necessarily need to be pardon and stone in the policy before we're able to do it, since we approve the agenda each time.
Um, the academic committee met, um, with over quite a bit of information. Uh, some of the highlights, um, I was really happy to hear that our district is still showing improvement, are showing improvements in ELA, um, and math. And, um, we are outperforming the state, um, in, even in consideration of some of the slumps that we see across, um, um, educational settings as a result of COVID. Um, and I think that the, um, something to be careful about that we continue to see improvements. Um, we had one of the other, uh, and are we implementing this, um, the civic writing this? Are we? Yes. So I know that was something that was, um, a long time coming. Um, and then we talked about just how we get that information out and making sure that our students are aware of something of that, um, ability to, um, seek some of those credentials as we look forward to, um, the changing requirements and graduation. Um, we also touched upon, um, some of the, um, improvements and the emphasis on providing, um, supporting our students in special education and supporting and moving forward with, um, dignity and just making sure that all of the services that we're providing are equitable and that we're meeting families at their point of need. And and I think that's it. We talked about a lot, but those are the, the highlights. And it was definitely, um, something to walk away, um, feeling proud about.
Any questions?
I think we'll move on to board liaison reports. Um, well, it's not really the liaison thing, but I went to, um, Safety Committee and also OACM. Um, OACM, they just talked about, you know, finishing up Iroquois and town, I mean, like, you know, the council list, just a few of the Stragglers things, but all the feedback in the meetings that everything's really well. And, um, a lot of gratitude expressed from the people in that committee and how well Iroquois has gone. Um, just wanted to pass that along. Also, um, in safety, a lot of things were discussed. Um, one thing I thought was worth mentioning, um, at VA, there's that Dexter Road that goes right next, Dexter Road or Dexter Drive, Dexter, whatever it is. Dexter goes along, um, VA there and they talk, it's a dead end past the next, the, the next intersection. And they talked about pulling the dead end up right past VA so you don't get any through traffic there because that's where kids cross to go to the, um, the playground and that. So I thought that was a great idea that our, um, principal at VA had mentioned. So I thought that was worth, um, just expressing some support for that as we go through revisions and through there. So, that's it.
As I say, I went to Craig's School. They're doing great. Um, but one thing I wanted to thank the district for, um, is bringing back the continuing education classes. I took a class this fall. I wanted to challenge myself and learn something new. And I had a great class and I'm excited to sign up for another one. And I'm hoping, um, that it slowly builds back up to what it used to be, you know, maybe some cooking classes, maybe some biz ed, working out in the weight room, just a variety of classes. But I think the school's commitment to bringing it back and actually serving is wonderful. Thank you very much.
Do we have any data on like enrollment?
So we, we will be doing a presentation, um, later this year and before the spring courses are released. We'll have our director, Amy, come in, talk about the range of courses offered, the enrollments for each of them. We did an open solicitation for course proposals. And so even though we're just in November, we're already thinking about what that will look like for next semester and hoping, as Judy said, that the interest will build and that more people will present courses for, um, consideration.
Yeah, I have a list of people that I'm gonna talk to and tell them because I don't know if people in the community are aware that, you know, how many people were aware that it's back? And, um, you know, I'm thinking coaches and stuff would be willing to do classes, so. Um, I attended the Rosendale PTO meeting. They are, um, well, they just finished, um, for Mr. Thon and they had some really creative ideas. Um, if they hit a certain mark by Monday of this week, Mr. Rikozzi is going, was going to kiss a therapy pig. Um, the kids are all into this. Hopefully they got to their number. I haven't heard an update. Um, yes, everyone should stay tuned. Um,
I didn't know there were therapy pigs.
And they have, um, a, a new president who's very into, um, the digital art. And she has a picture. She did a picture of like, like, it doesn't matter. It's very famous. And, um, I'm happy to share that along if anybody would like to see it because it gives you a nice visual for how badly these kids want to stay. Um, it's very sweet and he is a, such a good sport about it. So, um, I also attended the PTO council meeting last night. Um, they are so organized. Um, if any board members need contact info for the, um, building or the PTOs here in Lea, anyone with, I have the ones they want you to use. Um, they are looking to collaborate, to share resources. And the example they gave is, um, Teacher Appreciation Week. And what themes have people used? And if somebody else wants to use one, why do you need to spend your money on it if I've already got it? So they wanted to share those resources. Um, they had a really, um, wonderful conversation about how each board transitions between boards and they shared a great deal of ideas. Um, each building, each PTO is so well organized that they became even more well organized by sharing all these ideas. It was great, um, sharing activities. And then Septa would like to just share out that there's an open door fundraiser on December sixth. Um, uh, if you are so inclined to attend. And then I also attended the NCAP meeting. They continue to do great work for the community. They just did something at the Town Halloween event. Um, they're scheduling the Drug Takeback Day. Um, and their eyes are on a lot of their usual stuff, Niskade, um, the Prom Forum, the Builder Project and scholarships. Do they have a theme for Niskade yet? They say they do, but they're not sharing it yet. Um, so I, I have nothing to report there except that I believe it's, yeah, they, among the committee, they had decided, but they didn't announce it at the meeting for me to share. I'm almost done, I promise. Um, the high school had its first round of concerts and that was wonderful. Um, Niski now is very grateful for the very successful food drive that was just held in all the buildings. Thank you all very much. Um, as someone who works for them, I can tell you that that food goes a really long way. Um, and we actually had Libby and Sarah come, um, and pack bags with me last weekend or two weekends ago. Um, and they could attest to how full it was at this time because of, um, the generosity of the community. So thank you all very, very much. I think I'm done. And, okay, great. Um, we'll move on to item two, a update, District-wide safety. Or anything, just want to share the, it's, um, the do of information.
Yeah, so, um, our district-wide safety plan is being resubmitted for board consideration uh, to reflect changes that are required under Dash's law, which is, uh, a law that was signed into effect this past summer and requires schools to strengthen their emergency response protocols and training as it relates to sudden cardiac emergencies. So already we have updated our confidential building level plans. This, um, revised district level plan, which is now open for a period of public comment for thirty days, reflects those changes and, um, aligns our current practices with the new law and its expectations. So everything from placement and identification of AED devices to, um, training for staff, to educational programming that's age-appropriate for students, um, is included in the plan and it is available on our website for public inspection and comment. It will be submitted to the board for formal adoption on, um, July thirteenth, I think. Yeah, July thirteenth, or January thirteenth.
I was gonna say July.
Sorry, it's not that.
Yeah, public comment.
It's certainly half a day and certain questions the board has on it tonight, but it will be open now through our December meeting and into January.
Anybody with a question, Tony?
I actually have a question about it. Um, if staff members are trained, um, in like sudden cardiac arrest, help like CPR, for example, um, are they like legally protected under the law in case like there were any issues with that? Like, I know that there's like issues with like broken ribs and stuff that they could end up like filing a lawsuit for. Would those staff members be protected for something like that?
It's a great question. Um, all of our staff are protected under Public Officers' Law for any of their actions that are within the scope of their training and that occur during their regular workday or any assigned duty. So the, the answer is yes. Um, they are. They are protected, defended and indemnified as long as they act within their training.
Thank you.
It doesn't prevent them from being sued. I want to be very clear on that, but it does provide a very robust defense in the event they aren't.
And then also I noticed that it says that the the annual school safety training will be for students as well. Will that, do we know what that will look like? Will it be like part of a health class or something like that?
So we have a team looking at what it will look like on an age appropriate basis, beginning in kindergarten all the way through middle and high school. And at the middle and high schools, we do expect that it will be built into one of our existing curricula. So it won't be a new class. It will just be a lesson within an existing class. At the elementary level, it will probably be built into some of their other personal safety lessons. And and really the focus is going to be on recognizing the signs of an emergency, knowing when and how to call 911 for help and dependent upon one's age, making sure that you tell a responsible adult.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To B, 2026, 2027 Budget Development Calendar.
With the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, adopted attached 2026, 27 Budget Development Calendar.
Second. Any discussion?
Sure. Go ahead.
This is the Budget Development Calendar. It's largely unchanged from what we reviewed with the Audit and Finance Committee in October. I'll just try to touch on some of the highlights and it will be very familiar for those of us who have gone through the process over the last few years. I think about it really in kind of three overlapping phases. The first is really, you know, when we're putting together the fundamental building blocks, the budget for the year, which we're doing right now. And then we move into a really formal budget development with the Board of Education. And then finally, we're doing those activities where we're preparing for the vote, whether it's the legal notice, the presentations that we'll do in the community, the submission of signatures for board candidates. So that we're ready to have that vote on Tuesday, May 19th, as it is across the state this year. A couple of highlights from from each of those phases. The budget priorities thought exchange has kind of been a really important building block to gather some input from students, from staff, from the community on what their priorities are as we head into the budget. That will be open from December 1st through December 12th this year. Right now, we're taking a lot of a look at all of our known costs for next year so that we're able to carry those forward. We're working with leadership to identify their needs and priorities for next year. In fact, in this room tomorrow morning, we'll be having a budget workshop with our leadership team. Their budget worksheets they submit to us each year are open right now. So it's another important building block of the process. We'll move into the Board of Education Budget Development and just looking at the calendar here, there's between the board and the Audit and Finance Committee, there's 11 different sessions that are dedicated to budget development, to those conversations where we'll present information, answer questions. Yeah, there are additional insight and feedback and priorities from the board. Similar to the recent years, we'll do, we'll roll out our budget assumptions, which is really kind of a broad look at what we're expecting for next year on both expenses and revenue. Then we'll build what we've been calling a maintenance of effort budget, which is what will it take to carry all of our current programs and services into next year and what can we kind of expect in terms of baseline revenue? And then from there, we will bring to the board a recommended budget proposal. And that's where we'll again talk more about, you know, priorities and input and feedback from the board. Just as in past years, we'll try to do a really good job of that, bringing forward, you know, what we're currently doing and the costs associated with that, our current revenue, considerations and decisions for revenue for next year. And then also really highlighting any budget changes in any direction that we might anticipate or that we we need to discuss together. And through that process, we'll reach a budget proposal that again, as I mentioned earlier, we will bring and share as much information with the community as possible prior to the vote. So we're it's November 18th, but we're sort of, I sort of feel like we're in the budget process now. We're doing a lot of work to get ready for this. And again, between the board and the Audit and Finance Committee, we're just going to bring forward information as as we have it and as it develops through the process.
Any with any questions? Those in favor? Do you think that is? Item 2C, that award capital project phase 2B Van Antwerp environment. Clear motion.
With the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, award the contract listed below for Capital Project Phase 2B Environmental Abatement Work.
One second. Thank you, Judy. Any discussion?
Now, this is, should not come as a big surprise based on the age and complexity of Van Antwerp, but this is for additional scope for environmental remediation for newly discovered areas that are on.
They're not packing.
Yep, on argument, not.
Questions, discussion? Favor? Six. 2D, are a few award enrollment projections. Is there a motion?
That the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, award RFP NCSD-26-006 for an enrollment production study to SES Studies Team.
I'll second it. Kind of things. Is there any discussion here? All those in favor? 2E, Middle School Extracurricular Activity Funds Transfers. Is there a motion?
With the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, authorize the transfer extra classroom activity ECA account balances among middle school clubs and grade levels as outlined below and in accordance with the philosophy described in light of middle school reconfiguration.
Second. Second. Any discussion here?
Nothing other than I think it makes sense and I'm glad to see that they, you know, came together, talked about what would make sense for the students that raised the money in each respective school and how they can figure out a way to move forward. I'm going to know what we'll win.
Thank you for your words, man.
No, we appreciate too. We had some guidance from our external auditing firm, the Bonde de Group, and it was a collaborative process that looked for the most equitable solution to children changing buildings.
All right, all those in favor? That is six. Item 2F, Resolution to Participate in Ed Data Purchasing Cooperative. Is there a motion?
With the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, approve the resolution below for district participation in the Educational Data Services Inc. Purchasing Cooperative and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to execute the attached licensing and licensing agreement with Ed Data.
Okay. Thank you, Libby. Seconds. Any discussion here? All those in favor? That is six. Thank you. 2G, Return of Uncollected Taxes in Saratoga County. Is there a motion?
With the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, accept and file the list of uncollected Niskie and a school taxes from properties owned in the town of Flitton Park for re-leaving by Saratoga County.
Okay. Seconds. Any discussion here? Okay, those in favor? Six, thank you. 2H, Policy Review Series 7,000 of Students. Howard, was there anything in particular you wanted to note?
Mostly just relining some of the open policy, the relining the laws and for efficiency, combining two policies together. Auto work, Mr. Powell. Thank you.
All right, wait. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was going to ask about the privilege of the floor policy. Is that being revised?
Yes, it is still in the works, being revised.
Okay, so what's the plan with that? Are we going to revise it like next time or?
Yep, it's on the agenda to get taken care of right away. It is just not regularly.
One other thing, I don't know if this falls directly on under the students category, but the district support for academic competition beam travel, the guideline procedures that the district has, is that supposed to go as part of like a board policy on the website or is that like located somewhere else? How exactly would a team like see that sheet to see like what they do?
So right now, that is a budgetary allocation that is administered through the administration. Our principals are aware, our club advisors have been made aware and we will continue to remind them of the availability, but you know, it's a short succinct document that outlines the eligibility and the process for access.
Tonight is just information. I'm going to come up. Need her for vote? Anyone have, okay, so we're on to item three. Does anyone have any items to remove from the consent agenda? Three, and is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
With the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, approve the items B through M in the consent agenda per ASM 4A.
Second. Thank you, Howard. Any discussion? Oh, we don't discuss consent. All right, those in favor? Six, thank you very much. All right, item five, we're moving back to privilege of the floor. And the reminder, this one is the open forum. So thank you for allowing us to do the business of the board and here we go with.
Also, I I took the sheet. So I don't have anyone that meant to sign up for the second.
Was there anybody who did not get a chance to sign in because they maybe showed up a little bit late? Is your hand up? I'm so sorry. Yes. Sure, here.
Do you want to take a privilege of the floor? Do you want to speak?
For any, sure. Okay, just something short. I will start by reading then our, what we say at the beginning and then we'll begin. This meeting is intended for the Board of Education to conduct the business of the district and we respectfully ask that the following rules of privilege of the floor be respected. Privilege of the floor is extended to district residents, parents or guardians of enrolled students and staff who wish to address the Board of Education about this agenda or general operations within the school district. Each speaker is requested to complete the following speaker form that will be submitted to the board president just prior to privilege of the floor. Specific personnel or student matters shall not be addressed in public session and no identifiable information should be contained in any statement. Any statement that violates any of the aforementioned criteria may be stricken from the record. Statements must be kept to three minutes or less and alarm will sound when the three minutes are up and the speaker will be asked to finish a comment. If the speaker does not finish up when the alarm sounds, a second alarm will sound and the microphone may be muted. A total of up to 30 minutes will be allotted for privilege of the floor at each meeting unless the board votes affirmatively to extend the time. Comments may be responded to by the Board of Education or Superintendent at a later date. And I, our first speaker tonight is Lori DiCaprio.
Everybody, I'm Lori DiCaprio and I'm the Alternative Education Coordinator for our high school. Last year I came here to share some feedback and thoughts that our students had. This year I wanted to highlight a few successes that we've had so far. As a result of our connections and these programs in the high school, our overall summer school enrollment decreased. All of our students enrolled gained their credits last year. A few of our students have been connected with programs to help them find jobs in the community. At the request of the students who felt they were ready to return, we have successfully transitioned our connections program into the high school building. Students have gained confidence and are helping to run school-based clubs. Attendance has increased. Homeschool connections are stronger. Potential home instruction opportunities have been avoided as behavioral support is offered in an accountable and loving environment. The enrollment in both programs has increased. And last year with great pride, our seniors graduated. The last time I was here, our students said it best, but this time I asked a couple of parents to share their thoughts and here is what I received. The connections program has been such a game changer for our daughter. She has thrived in the program and as a result of it and the wonderful supportive teachers and staff, she will be graduating with a 2026 senior class. The ability to have consistency, smaller classes and more individualized attention has helped her excel and focus on learning. Every child is special and many just need a different structure to help them achieve their educational success. I hope this important program is adopted by all districts and is around as a permanent option for Niskie so more students don't give up on themselves and can truly, can truly succeed in their high school education and beyond. Another said, my husband and I both would say that the ACE program has been life-changing, not only for our child, but for us as parents. Our daughter is thriving in this learning environment and has gained confidence in her abilities. She has gone from completely failing to all A's except for one class. She is no longer anxiety ridden about going to school. Her attendance and overall view of school has improved significantly. We are so thrilled with the program and we really cannot say enough good things about it. Again, I want to thank the board and our district administration for continuing to support our program and the positive impact it has on our students and the community.
Thank you for sharing that, Lori. That means so much to hear tho- those perspectives. Because on paper it's awesome, but then to hear the actual feedback and how it's going is just these, this is incredible.
Thank you.
All right. We have, is it Del?
Yep. Hi, I'm being. This is all extemporaneous. That was wonderful. I'm so happy to be here. I've been a member of the community since 1980, a couple of years. Kids are all grown up and away, but I I serve on the Board of Elections, printing for a cause. You are all so special. I respect every one of you. The next generation is important to us. I'm a business owner as well, so we need good people. While I worked the Board of Elections, I can't give any names or anything, but several parents were talking. So that's why I came tonight. Could you look into this? They were very concerned about some musical programs being cut back and the parents were not contacted before this decision was made. And they feel that it's going to be a detriment to some of their children and their future placement for colleges and whatever. And music is so important for neurological development. I know those of you know more than I do, especially you men, but our main quarterbacks took piano lessons. Music is so important because it gives you extra vision and coordination. Anyway, I just wanted to share that. If you could look into that and please include parents like these wonderful people in all of your decisions. That's what I wanted to say, but I do thank all of you for what you do because education is number one, good education. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Last tonight, we have Rick Normandin.
And just so you know, the Good Samaritan law covers anybody that follows their medical training, like first aid, whatever, whatever the articles. Anyway, a couple of pamphlets in case you're interested. I know we're considering electric school buses. One of the things I wanted to let the school board know is that there are programs that allows the school district to sell off power from school buses during the summer to help with the high peak rates. Some of them say you can earn like between $3,000 and $6,000 a year for a school bus, see you have hooked up. So there are some different programs. So one, really big on electric buses. So I just wanted to let you guys know that there was a way to get some revenue generation through that. There is also studies out there that show that kids that ride electric school buses do better. They ingest less pollution so they get less particulate matter in their brain, their brains develop better, better grades, all that other empty stuff. So yeah, like somewhat on that note. I don't know if you guys have ever watched kids walk out of the school afterwards, but not straight east. That back exit from, you know, to south of, I guess, anyway. That back exit from, you know, just south of, I guess, anyway. Acrosswalk there with the flashing lights, which is great. I've seen a lot of kids trying to and when the buses are turning and everything else, the visibility is not great down the road. So I've seen some incidences where I think that'd be helpful for students. And then kind of to the special education part. Our district is getting better. But I would like to ask that they consider looking at how some of the information is presented. Not a teacher, just is, I know we've got lots of great teachers of the district. But some of the things to be aware, right, like for students that have dyslexia. Trying to copy down all the notes, you're listening to the teacher, you're trying to process that visual information, write it all down. The more that we can pre-position those notes into the students' hands, the more that they can focus on the instructions being given in the files and less on trying to get their brain to function right. You decipher what's being written on the board, translating it down onto a piece of paper. So much of the mental processing power is taken over just trying to take the notes. They're not able to actually follow the instruction. For the handouts, you know, there's dyslexic fonts out there. So if my kid is looking at on the computer, she can switch it over to the dyslexic font, but the handouts, they can't. So being able to provide those electronic. There are so many little things that can be done that makes such a big difference that, now I can't get into all of it, but I would ask you to start thinking about, you know, providing these resources online electronically, making them available. I tried to print out my daughter's math homework. I couldn't even print the PDF because it's locked out. So let alone trying to change it into a dyslexic font so that she could be able to read it and understand. So then my last thing, know I'm taking up some time here, is I would, it is my understanding that to stay in the accelerated math, you have to take each accelerated math component along the way. I would like you guys to look at that. My daughter has goantasia, so it was difficult for her to do the visualization. In order for her to maintain in the accelerated math course, she had to take accelerated geometry. She's got dyslexia and dyspeasia, so she's getting hit twice. But the only way that she could stay in the accelerated math, which you really desperately wanted to do, was to take accelerated geometry, which is very difficult, given the learning challenges that she has. She can't visualize things to be able to solve problems geometrically. So it's one of those things where I would like you to look at being a little bit more lenient around the accelerated math track and being able to make some of those courses optional. Geometry doesn't really play a lot into whether or not you can take the calculus and, you know, differential equations and things like that. So anyway, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All righty. They will need to convene to executive session, but it is my understanding we do not need to return to public?
Correct.
Okay, great. And is there a motion to go into executive session?
Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, can we go to executive session to discuss the matter related to Article 14 of Civil Service Law and Apppoint Matters with particular persons?
Second. Kim seconds, thank you, those in favor? And it's all six. Thank you very much and thank you to all of you for coming tonight.